Good morning. Being 9:00 AM, I'll call to the McHenry County Board Committee, the whole meeting of September 11th, 2025, and Ms. Van Hoff will lead us in the pledge this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy Keefe, please call the roll.
Pamela Althoff.
President.
Carolyn Campbell. John Collins.
Here.
Joseph Gotamaller. Terry Greeno.
Here.
Eric Hendricks.
Here.
Carl Kaminski. James Kearns. Dina Krieger.
Here.
Matthew Kunkel. Brian Sager.
Here.
Michael Shorten.
Here.
Michael Scala. Larry Smith. Patrick Sullivan. Paul Thomas. Gloria Van Hoff. Tracy Von Bergen. Chairman Bueller.
Here.
Having quorum, I'll entertain a motion to allow Mr. Collins and Mr. Hendricks to attend remotely. Ms. Althoff makes the motion. Mr. Shorten seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Good morning. I have several items to report before we begin reviewing the agenda for next Tuesday's voting meeting. Today, of course, is September 11th, and I'd like to start with a moment of silence to honor the almost 3,000 people who died on that horrible day. Thank you. On Tuesday, September 2nd, I had the honor of saying a few words at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Harvard Community School District 50's New Etched Center, short for Education, Transportation, Community Housing, Employment, and Daily Living Skills. The Etched Center houses a transitional program that prepares students 18 through 21 for adult life by teaching important life skills. This county board wisely approved an Advanced McHenry County Award of $853,125 towards this program, and it's great to see that even years down the road that our Advanced McHenry County program still continues to bear fruit. More than 50 people attended this ceremony, and I think the Etched Center is going to go on to do great things for the District 50 community. And last night, I also had the privilege of delivering the opening remarks at the 8th Annual McHenry County Water Forum at McHenry County College. Once again, Water Resources Specialist Scott Kikeendall and the Environmental Defenders of McHenry County put on an interesting and educational presentation to raise awareness of the need to be good stewards of our groundwater supply. Thank you to the guest speakers, Cecily Koontz of Baxter and Woodman, Brad Anderson, and Michelle Zimmerman from the village of Elgonquin. And thank you as well to Carolyn Campbell for attending. And thank you to our Planning and Development Director, Adam Wallin, assisted by State's Attorney's Civil Division Chief Laura Scary, for their informative zoning 101 representation just prior to our meeting this morning. If you have any follow-up questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to Laura or Adam. And finally this morning, as a reminder, Circuit Clerk Kathy Keefe is once again holding Amnesty Week. All next week, from Monday to Friday, people who have overdue McHenry County Court fines have a window to pay them off with collection fees and interest waived. This is a great opportunity for people to get overdue fines taken care of, but it only comes once a year, and you can learn how to take advantage of this opportunity by visiting mcHenrycircuitclerk.org. And that's all I have this morning. Do any members have comments this morning? Mr. Kaminski?
This past Saturday, I had the honor and privilege to witness what very few people ever get to witness. Out in our town square, here in Woodstock, Gunnerie Sergeant Salvador from Woodstock was planked by his wife, son, daughter, and family, veterans from the community, members from his unit, to stand with him as Captain Little and Gunnerie Sergeant Verdetti read aloud the promotion to Master Gunnerie Sergeant, the next higher enlisted rank, and there is only one more rank higher than that in the enlisted ranks. So, serving for over 17 years, he has demonstrated that he is a proven leader and more than that, ready for that responsibility. Following his promotion, Master Gunnerie Sergeant Salvador snapped to attention, raised his right hand, as Captain Little administered the oath of enlistment. That's right, he re-enlisted to continue to serve his country. What makes this so special are several factors. One is that only 1% of citizens in the US volunteer to serve their country. Two, very few make it to the highest enlisted rank. Three, these ceremonies are usually done on base in the commander's office and few are there. Four, a hometown soldier with a family still has the need to serve his country. What a testament to McHenry County where we have outstanding folks like that answering the call to service. Semper Fidelis, Master Gunnerie Sergeant Salvador. Godspeed. Hoorah!
Ms. Greeno?
In this year that we're celebrating 250 years of freedom in the United States of America, and we have the Constitution with our First Amendment right being free speech, because without the ability to speak and be identified and express ourselves, we become unhuman and debased. Yesterday, another political assassination of a conservative from Illinois took place with the murder of Charlie Kirk, and I would ask that we take a moment of silence to remember him, his family, and what he stood for in debating all people, that they could have their thoughts heard and processed.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Chairman Bueller? Oh, thank you, Chairman. Today, as we gather for our meeting, it's in the shadow of yet another act of political violence. The assassination of Charlie Kirk in Utah was a shocking and tragic event. Only days ago, our nation also mourned the census killings of Melissa and Mark Hortman in Minnesota. These events remind us that violence, no matter where it strikes or who it claims, is stirring the very fabric of our communities and our democracy. Let me be clear, no person, regardless of their views, should face violence. I extend condolences to the families of Charlie Kirk and the loved ones of Melissa and Mark Hortman. The lies were taken too soon. Their deaths must stand as a warning of what happens when anger and fear replace dialogue and respect. But we cannot stop at mourning. We must look honestly at the climate that feeds this violence. The rhetoric and imagery promoted by our current president is far too often normalized aggression and dehumanization. When leaders wink at violence for use words that paint political opponents as enemies, they're not just engaging in partisan politics, they're engaging lives. Mr. Kirk himself was no stranger to inflammatory rhetoric. He was a fierce offender of the Second Amendment. He built a career on sharp polarizing words that left many of our communities feeling targeted and demeaned. And yet, the First Amendment guarantees him the right to speak those words. This protects our right to disagree, protest, and call at harm. The balance, the right to speak freely, and the responsibility to speak responsibly, is the heart of our democracy. What we cannot allow is that the balance is destroyed by bullets. Disagreement is not a license for violence. Passion is not an excuse for an assassination. If we truly want to honor the memories of Charlie Kirk, Melissa Hortman, and Mark Hortman, we must commend ourselves rejecting violent rhetoric, wherever it comes from. We must hold our leaders, up to including the President, accountable for the words they use. And we must recommit ourselves to a political culture where ideas, not weapons, are tools of persuasion. Only then can we begin to break the cycle of violence that has already cost far too many lives. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to proceed to public comment. Just a reminder that a public comment is your opportunity to address the board. You'll have three minutes in which to do so. If you're not completed with your comments at that time, this red light will come in front of me, and I would ask you to summarize your comments. And first, we have Russ Hyatt.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here. I'm a member of American Legion Post 491 out of McHenry, Illinois. I'm the American Legion Riders Director. Every year, we have the honor of escorting veterans from the Honor Flight back to McHenry High School. This year, we had a couple people join us and help us, and at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Thomas to come up here. Mr. Thomas helped us by assembling and handing out flags, water, donuts. He was a big part of our ride today. I'd like to present to you the certificate of appreciation, and thank you for all you did. And I've got one more, and I'm going to walk over here, because I know this veteran friend of mine is a little giddy. Carl, stand up, please, sir. On behalf of the American Legion Riders, we thank you for everything you do as a veteran, a member of Post 491, and all activities of Post. Thank you for your time. This doesn't count on my three minutes.
Yes, it does. All right, Pete's got it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next, reports and presentations. We have the Fiscal Year 26 Budget Update with Finance Chair Mike Scala and Carrie Wise, our CFO.
The blue is a calming color, so that's why we're... So, thank you again.
Hello? Okay, so I wanted to thank everyone for entertaining us again, for listening to the budget. Again, we're providing information to you as it comes in, so all of the budgets have now been presented to each of the corresponding liaison committees, and so now we've rolled up everything into the budget. So, this is for information. I encourage you to ask questions if you have them, but, you know, in two weeks, when we have our full budget discussion, we'll get into a very robust and lengthy discussion about where we're going with the budget. But we wanted to at least give you some, I'll say, information beforehand to think about. We're not in a really good position financially, so we wanted you to at least have two weeks to kind of contemplate what we'll be talking about in two weeks. So, that's kind of what we're going to be presenting today.
Thank you.
Oh, you want me to do something different?
No, it's perfect. Okay, so as you've been hearing me talk all summer, I'm just going to review again, you know, some of the terminology in government accounting is different. So, again, I'm sorry if you keep hearing me say this over and over again, but as we get further along in the slides, you know, it's really important that we make sure that everyone understands, you know, the difference between the funds, how they interact with each other, how they cannot interact with each other. So, just super quick, as I've been saying again all summer, we have governmental funds and enterprise funds. So, the types of governmental funds are general fund and then the special revenue fund. So, the general fund is our largest operating fund. It has the most sources of unrestricted revenue. And if you remember from previous presentations, about just under 40% is property tax, so the remaining 60% of the general fund comes from other sources of revenue, you know, other types of tax, grants, interest income. And this accounts for 26 different departments. So, you know, when we talk about the Sheriff's Department or the Health Department, you know, those large operating departments fall under the general fund, as well as a lot of the support departments, county administration, human resources. And then, just to kind of get an idea of size, you know, when we talk about budgets and how they affect the different funds, FY '25, the approved expenses for the general fund is $107 million, and what we have right now, proposed for the general fund, is $106.5 million. The special revenue funds, again, remember, we've been talking about those are siloed. The revenue that goes into those funds is restricted, and so the restricted sources of revenue have to be used for a specific purpose. But that doesn't mean that we can't think about how the funds interact with each other, and I know we've been talking a lot about it specifically at finance. The county has 43 special revenue funds, and we have some really small ones to some very large highway ones. But again, just to kind of give you an idea of scope, FY '25, $137 million. So, the special revenue funds altogether is larger than the general fund, and then the proposed for these funds in '26 is $154 million.
And that's mainly because of transportation?
Correct. And so, again, we talk a lot about, you know, there are some operating special revenue funds like GIS, but a lot of them are project funds. So, you'll kind of see the fund balances and the expenses go up and down in these, because as these funds, because they have restricted revenue source, so who's ever in charge of that also has to think about, you know, the money coming in, long-term expenses. So, they save up for it, and then, like, in the highway department, they're project funds, you know, they budget for a project and then spend it down over the years of the project. The enterprise funds, Valley High and E911, those are more, the accounting is more like you would see as a business, you know, they just have revenue that supports their services. So, good. I know you guys are tired of me.
I'm well refreshed. I had a good night's sleep.
Another term that we hear a lot, specifically when we're talking about budgeting over this past summer, is the reserve. So, what do the reserves mean? It's the amount of money, I guess, in the bank, so all funds have a reserve, but we're going to focus specifically on the general fund. So, if you look here, this actually is directly from the financial statements. It's on page 225, if you want to go on the finance side and pull it up. But I actually really like this chart, because this trend, so the general fund and then the rest of the special funds, you can see where it's been over these past 10 years. And so, when you calculate the general fund reserve, we only want to look at unrestricted types of revenue, because, as I said earlier, there is a lot of unrestricted revenue in the general fund, but there is some that is restricted. So, these bottom two lines, if you total these two numbers, the nine and the 46, that's where we come up with the FY '24, the $56.9 million. So, again, if that is the amount of money that is, I guess, in your bank account, you think about personal finance, you know, your safety net. And so, the months of reserve calculation is, if all money stopped coming in, how long could this fund last? So, that, of course, you have to take into an account what your expenses are. So, we look at the next fiscal year budget and divide it by 12 to come up with the months. So, on the previous slide, when I said it was $106.5 million, if you take that number divided by 12, that's where we come up with the 8.8, and then the 25 number is where we come up with the 8.9. So, then you just divide those numbers, and that's where you come up with the months of reserve. But what exactly does that number tell us? And, you know, again, it's just 121. The months of reserve was really higher than where it should be. So, as we were coming out of COVID, the general fund had some financial benefit through the pandemic. You know, we had high vacancies, so lower expense. This one, okay. And then we had, you know, a lot of money coming in specifically from ARPA, but other grants. So, we had lower expenses, higher revenue. So, we saw the months of reserve starting to grow. So, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, reserve is really a one-time source of revenue. So, how can we spend down the reserve but not tie it to our ongoing expenses? So, during the budget discussions of '23 and '24, the planned spend-down was to fund the capital plan that had been kind of put on hold for some of the projects. So, you can see the budget expense is going up, and a lot of that has to do with funding the capital plan, but also mixed in with that number is just recognizing that the cost of providing the service is also going up. So, we have to kind of, to separate those out. But you can see where we're at, projected for '25, 6.19, which, you know, again, we talk about the correlation between the funds. So, right now, there are some special revenue funds that are not healthy, so they're relying on some of the general fund reserve to make payroll. So, we really have to think about that reserve number and how the other funds are doing when we consider, you know, if that's a good number, 6.19. And also, too, if we see it going down in the future, if we see it staying steady. Is that, any questions on that? Okay. So, property tax. This, I haven't shown this chart yet in my presentations, but I really, like, this is really just from the county clerk out on his website, has a great report. And so, it looks a lot, it all looks similar to this. The aggregate extension and then the levies. And so, again, it's circling back to, we can only collect so much in property tax based on the rules in PTAL, but we have to take that total and divide it up amongst the levies. And in previous presentations, we talked about, you know, IMRF, FICA, VAC, you know, the general fund property tax is just about 40%, but for those particular funds, property tax is 100% of their revenue. So, we have to think about, you know, we have a total that we can't go over, but what are some of the needs of the other funds, as well as the needs of the general fund? So, this chart just shows, this is the proposed amount, and then we have to break that up amongst the 10 levies. So, then you can see in the blue column, this really looks at the increase or decrease from previous years. So, we've talked a lot about IMRF and FICA needing to increase, and VAC as well. So, there was good discussion at Highway about reducing these two levies and essentially moving them into the three that needed. And honestly, a lot of times, it's, you know, we have the max that we're capped at, and a lot of time, it's looking at the other funds, and then what's left, and how do we manipulate or maneuver that in the general fund. Because, again, there's more decision points in the general fund, that's why we can do that with this. Any questions on this one? This is the same information, just in a pie chart, because I know, I actually prefer this one, but I know that a lot of people prefer to see this one. So, again, it's just the percentage, you know, and again, we talk a lot about the general fund and property tax, because the general fund gets 60%, but we have to keep in mind the other funds, specifically the ones that property tax is its only source of revenue. Okay, so, we have all the budgets through committee. And so, where we're at right now, this is just rolled up, so the category, there's a lot of main accounts underneath those categories, but we just roll them up, so it's easier to see. Top section is revenue, bottom section, expense, this is general fund only. The amount in the red, but I can't see, 3.7. And so, you know, last month, when I was here, we talked about it being about $3 million. So, I know you guys are wondering what changed. So, in finance, we had a good discussion about some of the expenses in non-departmental, so we pulled some of those expenses back, and that was offset by Treasurer Kurtz, when she presented her budget, that's the budget that holds the interest income for the general fund, you know, and she did a lot of analysis on why this number is going down. If you look, it's going from 2.6 to 1.6. So, I know, I can have her come in a couple weeks, if you guys want to dig into that more, but I know a lot had to do with projecting out interest rates. But also, if you remember on the reserve, we're seeing our reserve go down, and so the reserve is what's invested. And so, if we need more money for operations or more money available for operations, that's going to affect our interest income. Also, too, I want you to focus on the personnel line. If you look at the '25 budget versus the proposed '26, you know, in a couple slides you're going to see, we're actually reducing some FTEs. So, we're seeing a lot of this increase in rate, you know, and Suzanne pointed out yesterday that she said they're also seeing a trend of the long-tenured employees are staying longer. So, when... So when we hire, typically, it goes to the bottom of the grade. So that's where sometimes we see savings, but if people are staying longer. So really, a lot of the increase is the merit, the market adjustments, you know, for some of the union contracts that have been approved, you know, and just employees at the higher, the higher range in their grade staying longer. So again, that's stuff that we really have to keep in mind as we look out into the out years, because this is the number that, you know, things have already been approved and moving, and this one is going to just keep growing.
So one of the things that we've been talking about and we've been foreshadowing, I guess, is that this, the delta between the '64 and the '67, you know, just that delta going forward year over year over year becomes an issue for the county because we can't, even if we were to take CPI and new growth every single year, we can't, we're going to, we can't cover that. So that doesn't include all the supplementals and everything else, you know, inflation of fuel, services, supplies. So that's where we keep on talking about, you know, we're behind the eight ball, I guess, you know, when we look at what we can generate with our CPI. The CPI is on a smaller number. So because of us taking the 10.75 million out of that number when we got rid of the mental health levy, that is now, we're taking a number minus that, right? So it's not able to generate as much money. So that's where we come into an issue with a revenue stream to be able to support even just the personnel side of our budget versus everything else that's going on in our budget.
So over the summer, you know, through some discussion at committee, through discussion, you know, with the departments, when they sit down with Pete and I, we already have certain things built into those numbers that you just saw. One of them being, in the spring, you guys passed a fund balance policy, and one of the items in there was specifically addressing the amount of the terminal reserve, which that's the amount that's sitting with IPBC, our insurance broker, health insurance, yes. You know, there's a certain level of reserve that they require, and then there's money that we pay in because we pay, we pay based on a claims equivalent that they set aside. And so we decided, you guys decided, that we would be conservative with that amount so it could be a longer-term strategy. So we're using 1 million of that terminal reserve. So in this slide here, this operating transfer, the largest amount in that operating transfer line is the operating transfer out from the general fund to the benefit fund. And that covers the premium equivalent for all employees within the general fund. So we are able to lower that number by a million, and then the benefit fund will utilize the terminal reserve. Also, there was a lot of discussion at committee when Court Services and the Circuit Clerk presented their budgets about some changes that they're making in their department with technology or change of service delivery. And so they were able to reduce FTEs and then one in county administration for retirement. So those numbers are already included in the previous slide. What is not included are the, any of the supplemental requests, which total 1.2 million, and you see I haven't broken out between personnel and non-personnel. A lot of the non-personnel is software-related, and some of it is, you know, Alicia did the AI presentation at Admin Services last week. You know, and some of the supplemental requests have to do with that. There's some software that's coming off of ARPA in that number. Okay, so I'm going to let Mike take over. But this, so the chairman, Pete, I know at the committees, it's been discussed, you know, what are some of the solutions that the board has for closing this budget gap? So these are some of the ideas that we received from board members, and then we added some dollars associated with that. And again, I think when we talk about this today and in two weeks, I don't think that these are necessarily good ideas or bad ideas or people think that this is the right thing to do. It's just an option. It's available. It's not required by state statute for some service, so we could in theory get rid of it, but doesn't mean that it doesn't mean it's a good service.
You're asking me if that's what you think? I don't know what you think. Okay. So again, we had asked board members to come up with ways that the budget could be fixed. So remember, we're looking at $3.7 million in a deficit right now to have a balanced budget. So these items are the items that board members came up with and were able to put on this sheet here so that you can see what everyone else was thinking. I'm just going to run through them really quick. So when you, so general fund positions, we just did an average. So if we eliminate positions, and we're not saying where, just simply for dollar purposes, you're looking at about $85,000 with all in. So eliminating positions would yield that. Eliminating the matching and bridge levies. So can you go back to the slide with the levies on it? Okay, so that is taking the additional 200 and 200 from here. So we're already giving up half a million, the 300 and 200. There's still 200 in here. So this is recommending taking the additional 200 out of each one. There's ramifications to that. We can get into that. We talked about this at Transportation Committee. I would strongly recommend we wouldn't take all 200. We would leave, similar to what we did with the nursing, nursing home, Valley High, we would leave something in those levies so that they're still alive, so we can leave, you know, pick a number, $5,000 or something in those levies still, just so that they're still there. But that's where that dollars are coming from. Okay, go back. Eliminating health insurance for county board members, again, that will not help next year's budget. It'll help the year after that's budget, but that is 267,000. Health Department increasing fees, that's 150,000. Charge back of overhead expenses associated with enterprise funds. So I'll explain that a little bit. So when enterprise funds are doing services for us, let's just take internet services, you know, right now, we're doing that in-house, we can charge back that enterprise fund for those services that they're doing. And remember, they're siloed, as you put it, separate funds, so we can charge them back for the services that we're providing to them where if we didn't provide them, they would have to go out and get them from somewheres, right? So that's what that is contemplating. Moving squad car replacements to the RTA dollar. So again, that's covered with general fund dollars right now, but because RTA can be spent on transportation and safety, that would fall under that category. Again, there's been a philosophical thought process by this board that we only use it on transportation and not on safety, but that is an option. Do you want to wait till I'm done, Jim, or do you want to?
Well, I just like to add an idea to this or something, thoughts, when you're done.
Okay, sounds good. Consider the lookback option. This is something that I've mentioned before. Again, what that means is so state allows us to do a three-year lookback to the highest levy that we levied at any point in time, which would be before we had removed mental health. That would yield about 6 million. Just as an FYI, you know, so we could do that this year, we could do that next year. Next year, it won't be 6 million because depending on what we do with our budget this year, that will have, the delta will have gone away a little bit. We said 4.7, we think, for next year. So next year, even if that is an option for next year again, it's not going to be 6 million, it'll only be 4.7 million. And then transfer from recorder automation for a new computer rollout, that was something that Joe had come back after he gave his budget presentation about something that he could do. Going down a little bit further, eliminating funds for non-county-owned bridges, that's $2 million that is currently in the RTA fund that we spend every single year. And then increase the McRide, McConnect fees. I don't know, we'd know what that's going to yield, but that's a discussion purpose that we haven't quite had yet. That's, again, not going to raise a lot because, based on usage and everything, but it's still something. So those are the, those are the ideas that people had brought forward. So that's where we're at with ideas right now. I think if, just as a side note, if you, if you take out the lookback option, we're still over a million dollars short to close the budget gap this year, even if we were to do all of these options, of which some of them won't take effect for next year. So they're, it's not, they're not an option, but they're not an option to fix next year's budget. So we're really more like 1.5 million still short, even if we were to do all these. Okay, so let's go to Jim first. It's not my choice. That's a chairman's choice.
Go ahead, Pam. Pull your mic up.
Just as one of the individuals who provided many of the recommendations you see before you at this point, I just wanted to make clear that that doesn't mean that those recommendations have all been supported. Those are options that we want you to consider and discuss as a possibility, but that does not necessarily mean those people that provided those options are supportive of all those actions. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you, Pam. One of, one of the thoughts that came to my mind as Kerry was speaking about the staff was staying longer. Like in the school districts, Mike, where you did buyouts of contracts at 55, whatever, is there possibly that we could offer some of these people who were closer to retirement, the higher salaries, a potential buyout that would get us, lower the, substantially possibly lower our wages? Is there a program that we could look, or do we have that in place?
You're correct. There are instances where local governments do that. And IMRF provides opportunities therein. It's not done very often, and it's not done very often in governments that are growing because you really need to commit for a long term to not replace that position. And that's tough, but we can put it on the board.
So I say I'm not replacing it. I'm saying still replace it, but cut that salary down substantially in half.
But you gotta, you gotta commit like five years to not replace that position for this to make sense.
Okay. One of the other questions is on the enterprise. Valley High, I believe we voted to charge them $300,000 or $400,000 per year for their accounting and that. What other enterprises out there, what are some of those that we could do?
So we have two enterprise funds, Valley High and E 911. And this is in the, this actually has been in the budget policy for a couple of years because really, if, if we're accounting for those two entities like a business, you know, it's really appropriate to charge them for HR or administration or IT overhead. You know, and we kind of just, we didn't consider it in the past couple of years just based on where the general fund was at with the reserve. But this number is made up, the majority of it is from Valley High, and a lot of that is because they have more FTEs than E 911. So a lot of the allocation is based on that. Plus, E 911 already pays for a lot of their own IT out of their fund. So it's those two.
Okay.
We could expand to special revenue funds, but that would be...
All right.
I mean, we could consider it if that's something that you guys would like to look at.
So we would go from 300,000 to another, to 800,000 essentially for Valley High is what you're...
So the 534, 898, we have a formula based on some information that IT gave us, based on some of the costs within the overhead departments and the general fund, and we spread that out based on FTEs. So over 500,000 is for Valley High and the rest is for E 911.
Okay, that's, that's the answer I was looking for. Okay. And I kind of like your lookback idea, so that's all I got to say.
Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Kerry, if you could just clarify on, on Valley High, we are not currently charging them any chargeback fees, correct? We have in the budget that we have that we could, but we're not currently doing that, right?
For the most part, correct. They do cover some of their own costs already for own system, some of the facilities charged, and that just goes directly to their fund, like through payroll.
Right.
But this would be like an actual formula for, you know, we looked at the auditor's office, county administration, human resources, the total expenses, and then allocated that by total FTE, which we're not currently doing.
Okay. So Valley's high expenses would rise by the number that you indicated earlier?
Correct, about half a million. Well, a little over half a million.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Shorten?
A couple of questions. The lookback option, so that, again, going back three years, the highest amount, is that essentially allowing us to reset our levy at a higher level? Can I continue going forward?
Correct. So the state allows you to go and do a three-year lookback. You are required to take the highest amount from the last three years. It's not an option of what you take. So that's what that would yield. Now, we, we could theoretically, if we don't want to utilize that and utilize that dollar amount permanently, 6 million, let's say, which would then, you know, come down, we could do a lookback and then abate some portion of that lookback that we don't need, back to the, so we have to take it all, but then we can, we can abate that. And that's a function in Joe's office. So that's, it's, the taxpayer wouldn't theoretically, it's not like they would get, pay the money and then we would give the money back to them. It's a function before the tax bills go out that we would, we would be in turn taking it, but then we'd be giving it right back to them on their tax bill. So that is, that's part of that lookback option of what we could do.
And then the other question, if you can go back to the slide with the...
Sorry, just really quick, so you can see it like in the calculation. If you look this prior year, this was what we extended last year. So when you say take the lookback, the prior year, that would be like the base, would be the highest of the past three. So that's about 73.7. So then the calculation would just be off of the new base. So I guess to answer the question, it does bring it up.
Okay. And then going back to the slide with all the suggestions, the last one was McRide, McConnect fees. How much is budgeted currently for those and how much are we looking to fund next year or what's been proposed?
That's going to be here.
Is this on? So we were, I've directed PTAC to look at increasing rider fees on both of these programs regardless of the budget direction because it's been a few years since we've looked at increasing fees anyways. years since we've looked at increasing fees anyways. So I think I had told PTAC that one suggestion we had was for an increase in fees of about 50%, and that would generate about 150 to 200,000 dollars. But all that is, is that's, instead of us paying that through the RTA sales tax, that's just money that the rider is paying on their end. So it's, it would keep 150,000 in RTA sales tax in the bank, basically, if you think of it that way.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Kunkel?
It is my understanding that we're going over, we're doing this actually in two weeks, right? So, we don't have to have all these. Because I know things like in transportation we talked about, I know there's possible advances to E911 from the state end of this. So maybe all this is better debated in two weeks, yes?
Yeah, we're going to have a real in-depth discussion in two weeks. I just, I want to get people's questions answered so they can think about this for two weeks, basically, and, and possibly come up with more solutions. So, I, I, yeah, I don't need to get into the weeds per se, but I want to at least answer people's questions that they have pertaining to what was presented.
Thanks Chairman. I do believe that one of the hardest things for us to do is to realize that whatever we do right now is going to impact the future. And it's kind of easy for us right now, not really easy, but in a way simpler, for us to think about this current fiscal year, the 3.7 million dollar gap, right? So we can try to come up with ideas for that particular gap. But we have to always think about what is the remedy, if you will, for the future as well. So we can't just do everything on a temporary basis. We have to kind of look ahead. And it's a very challenging type of thing to do. I do appreciate the discussion today, and I, I think that some of the suggestions which are up there are, are solid suggestions, which we need to consider in depth, and to review, and to give them a thumbs up or thumbs down. But as Mike you stated, even if we do all those things without the lookback, we're still going to be short for this fiscal year. And that will lead us to being short in future fiscal years as well. So I think we need to be cognizant of that, and really think about those things. An additional area that, I mean, certain things always come to mind. You know, personnel. Personnel is the greatest expense. But we are a service entity, so we have to have personnel, and personnel are going to cost, that's one. The second thing we always think about right away is the bridge program. And we know that that's a capital improvement type of thing, and so that's a high-cost particular item. But there are also specialty programs that we have instituted, I think, to the benefit of equality of life and, and efficiencies, and helping individuals in need. But that is certainly the social work program that we have, and, and the specialty courts program which we have, all of which I'm not suggesting we cut. But it's that type of specialty efforts that we undergo within the county that also add to, to our costs. So I think we do need to be cognizant of the fact that those programs are out there. And certainly, if we're going to start looking at options, those are options that we, we may have. I think we have a tendency to kind of look at everything in block. It's got to be the whole thing or nothing. I, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the case. For example, with the bridge program, or with personnel, we could say, and I just got a report, and I'm grateful for this, but there are multiple vacancies right now. They totaled just less than $4 million. And this, this list includes programs that wouldn't be affected, or positions that would be affected, because these are, many of them are grant-funded, et cetera, et cetera. So we're going to have to do a greater in-depth analysis of this, but staff was gracious enough to provide this to me. We can say, okay, we're going to put all of those off, you know, just hold those vacancies. They're fixed for a year. We can say six months. We can say we're willing to fund, you know, 10 major positions, or 20 major positions out of those. There are options in the middle. We don't have to look at everything in lump sum. That's the point. The second thing I think is with regards to bridges and funding. There is a program that allows us, and allows the townships, to utilize a 50% mask program whereby the townships have to come up with 50%. And we, we come up with 50% that we share, but that's also an option for us to take a look at. And so, I think that there, the point of my commentary is the fact that there, it's a lot of gray. A lot of gray in there within each of these suggestions that I think we need to be willing to, to look, to utilize those options to the best of their ability for both this year as well as future years. Thank you.
Mr. Gotamaller?
Yes, if you look at the lookback provision, the other thing that you have to remember about it is, even if you took it and abated every penny of it, it preserves options in the future. And you, I, I am concerned, I think we get through next year without really a great deal of effort. It'll happen. But I'm worried about, like, two years or three years down the road, if you don't preserve that option, you could find yourself making harder decisions. It's an option. If you abate it all, it's had no impact on the bottom line in terms of taxes, but it means that next year, if you needed, it's available.
Ms. Greenow?
Yes, I, I really appreciate this. This is great. And listening to the input of the other board members is great. I had a couple of questions. Did we receive a list of ideas that were generated by the departments and the administration on different ideas of what we could do to be in budget?
So each of the departments that, I mean, they came through all the committees. So the ideas that departments came up with were incorporated into the budget already. So that was like when we, when you looked at the...
Well, I just mean since there is a shortfall, I mean, to go now and say, okay, well here's where we are. Because I think that could be a really good conversation also. Because you got to remember, I actually wasn't one of the cut 3% votes, or when we were taking a straw poll earlier in the year. But the information given to the departments was, we're going to cut 3%. And so, you know, they started out with that, that's where they were going, and, you know, here we are. Now we've got this. I just think it would be really good to get that information from them also, because they're boots on the ground and may have ideas that, that we're not even aware of. So that's one thing for the upcoming meeting. And then the other thing, I just wanted to clarify because the lookback, do we have a time limitation on how far we can look back?
Three years.
Three years. Okay. So if right now, our peak was the 73 million, and that's two years ago?
Last year.
Oh, that was last year? Okay. So 24, and then we have 25. Okay, so two years. So, we talk about doing the lookback and trying to get the advantage if that was something that we needed. That would be also, so something available to us going forward, so that if we were in a situation next year, we could still look back and take advantage of that 73 million?
Correct.
Okay.
So you have two years, so that's why I'm saying next year, I'm making an assumption here, but if we, if we as a board decide to take the CPI in new growth this year, instead of 6 million, that would be 4.7 million next year as an option. Because we've already increased, you know, over one year. So, i- if we didn't take CPI in new growth this year, then that would still be 6 million at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify one thing, the, when we sat down with, for the administrative meetings with the departments, the direction was, from us, was not to cut 3%. Because again, the, I think the initial straw poll was lowering the levy by 3%, not the total budget. But we do, every year, regardless, you know, talk about efficiencies, or things they're doing, or questions they have. And, and sometimes I think the best thing that we can do is, you know, we meet with all the departments. And so sometimes we're kind of just like, you know, the matchmaker, like, this department needs this, talk with this, or so. So that's always going on. But, you know, we can revisit if they have other ideas. And, you know, a lot of it too was left to, for discussion at committee, for reductions.
Ms. Altov?
I sound like a broken record to Kerry. I just want to remind everybody too, part of the story of why we are where we are is because those who came before us, and those have been serving, have been serving in long-term capacities on the board, have listened to our taxpayers, and we have made wondrous attempts to reduce the county's portion of the property tax. We have been advocates for the taxpayer for a very long time. And I don't want that message to get lost, because people who did come before us listened. And so we find ourselves in a position where we do have less to levy against. So, I just don't want that part of the story to get lost. Thank you.
Mr. Kearns?
I really need you to clarify this one point after Mr. Collins's question about the enterprise on Valley High. In our current and every budget since we approved it, there is $300,000 being charged, or 350 being charged to Valley High for their accounting presently. That's in that figure already, so this is additional to that.
No, there is a chargeback in Valley High for insurance, right? Is that the 350?
Yeah, that, that's correct.
350, right?
It, it's going to vary. It's based on their policy costs, and then their actual losses for the year will charge back. So, it's been close to 400,000, I think, recently. But whatever the actual numbers are, they're, they're charged back.
Okay. And so then, this figure is additional to that. That's why I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on. Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Okay, well, so you kind of see where we're at. I'm looking forward to our discussion. I'll make sure I wear my money shirt in two weeks. So, we'll have a in-depth discussion about how to close this. So, again, for information, so two weeks, we're going to have, you know, committee the whole workshop on nothing but the budget. After that, we're hoping to come out of that meeting with direction on what to bring to the finance committee in October, which is what we'll actually come forward with as far as our budget goes. That will then go to the October board as to what gets put on display. And then it's on display for 30 days, and in November, then we vote on the budget. So that's sequencing, how things are going to happen. Ideally, I would like us all to be on the same page whenever we decide, whatever we decide, when it comes through finance, you know, we're going to vote on what is going to move forward to the committee, the whole. And once it gets put on display, I'm hoping that we're, you know, a majority of us are behind whatever that is. Again, we're trying to avoid the November fight as to changing things. So, again, we're, we're doing all this process change in order to avoid what has happened for the last several years in November. So, again, workshop in two weeks is critical in order to achieve that goal. So, look forward to the discussion in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Do any members have items from next Tuesday's agenda they'd like to remove for discussion? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, in zoning, regular agenda, 11B.1.
Okay. Mr. Kearns?
11A.3, 11A.4.
Okay, seeing no others. Mr. Kearns, 11A.3 and 4?
I just, no discussion other than I would just like to vote separately on those in the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to point out that this petition was, ZBA recommended to deny it with a seven, zero vote. But it's another one that comes to us, written in the affirmative. So if you want to agree with this, with the ZBA, the ZBA's recommend, excuse me, recommendation to deny, you would be voting no Tuesday night. Thank you. 11B.1 on the regular zoning agenda.
Okay, Mr. Scala, 17B.2.5.
Yeah, I just wanted to inform the board. So at our finance meeting last week, we had a very robust discussion about this resolution. And I think it was the sentiments of the committee members that we wanted to bring this to the full board for discussion. I think there was a lot of really good comments. The elected officials that were there, I think most all of them were there, or their liaison was there for them. But, you know, they, they went through and provided the justification as to what is being requested. And so if you, you know, I'd strongly encourage you to go back and listen to the finance meeting pertaining to this. It was probably about, maybe an hour and a half in of the four-hour meeting, roughly, give or take, so you can look at it. Anyways, so I just wanted to inform the board that, that there was a really good discussion there. I, I think we voted 5-0 to move it to the full board for that discussion. So I, you know, I don't really have any positives or negatives to say about the resolution in itself, just that there was a really good discussion about it.
Mr. Kunkel?
Yes, and at admin, we had questions with this also. And we chose to move this to a time and date certain beyond. We pushed this back, especially in light of the fact that we're a shortfall budget. We wanted to concentrate our efforts on the budget. This is not something that is imminent. We still have time on this. So we have, at admin, the same resolution, we moved this down to another date. It would be my idea to put a motion in at the meeting to move this to maybe December, and then pick this up again after we're done with the budget, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, so no further comments. Pete, you got a report for us today?
A couple of things. I, I, number one, I did provide the, the written report, emailed that out last night. And again, as always, thanks for everybody who contributed in that. A couple of notes in that report that I wanted to highlight. The 2050 plan, the Long and Away to 2050 plan is, is coming forward in October. And Hossel Levine, our, our third-party consultant, will be present at, at the October COW meeting to kind of walk you through it and answer questions. And hopefully, we can get a vote then at the October board meeting. I also noted in the written report, at Administrative Services last week, Alicia Schuler and her AI task force did a really nice presentation of what AI is meaning for McHenry County government now, and, and what it could be. And so if you haven't had a chance, I'd encourage you to go back and, and look at, at that committee meeting and the video therein. I think staff did a great job of, of presenting things, and are appreciative of all the work there. I don't know this, I don't think this is in the report itself, but I did want to report that we got our June sales tax for mental health sales tax this week, or last week, Monday. And it was 993,000. So we are, we're now seven months into the mental health sales tax, and we're averaging just under $900,000 a month. So you, you can see we're, we're outpacing what we anticipated. We anticipated about, about 10.4, but it's going to be somewhere in the 10.5 to 10.7 range. So, really promising there. Sort of anticipated this, Kerry pointed out, you know, sometimes it takes a little bit while for vendors to, to catch up and get all their reporting right. And I think we're seeing that, because this was June sales tax, it's not December, and it's the biggest one yet. So, fingers crossed there that it's good progress there. The last note I'll have in your, in your county ministry report, if you look on the electronic version that I emailed you last night, there's a link to an article by CEO Magazine, and they did an interview of our very own county engineer, Joe Kapolski. And it's a really, really cool interview, so I'd encourage you to take a look at that. That's all I have.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scala makes a motion, Mr. Smith seconds. All in favor, say aye. Have a nice day. Just a, a quick note, our, our next meeting is scheduled for 11 o'clock or immediately after. I got a couple of things I got to attend to, so if we could reconvene, it's in the conference room. to, so if we could reconvene, it's in the conference room, is it conference room A that we're going to be doing our next one?
A. Scheduled in A.
Scheduled in A, so we'll be in A.